Good afternoon, everyone. My name is City Councilor Ed Flynn, President of the City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll call to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please?
Certainly. Counselor Arroyo.
President.
Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Bock.
President.
Counselor Braden.
President.
Counselor Edwards.
President.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
President.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn.
Yep.
Counselor Lara.
President.
Counselor Louie Jean.
President.
Counselor Mejia.
President.
Counselor Murphy.
Eric.
And Counselor Worrall.
President.
Mr. President, we have all in attendance.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, we do have a member of the clergy that is with us on Zoom, and I would like to introduce them at this time. We have Monsignor Liam Bergen, who will give today's invocation. We have Monsignor Liam Bergen, who is planning to give us the invocation today. He hasn't joined yet. However, at this time, I would like to ask the clerk if she would like to give the invocation a short prayer to open this up. Just I don't want to keep us waiting here.
I usually bring my magic book.
Yeah.
So, dear Lord, as we gather today in this amazing chamber, the chamber for the people of Boston, that their voice may be heard, I ask you to bless each of these counselors with wisdom, compassion, fairness, justice, and love for this city. May their work be from the heart, and may it bring our city to more justice, more peace, and a greater understanding of the work of this body that tries to shine a light upon every community in the city. Bless their work, dear Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for those inspiring words guiding us today. At this time, could you please stand, if you are able to, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now onto the first order of business, which is the approval of minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All of those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. The meetings over the last minute stand as approved. Voting for the rules. Madam Clerk, I would like to take Docet 0205 out of order. These are the council rules for this term, which we have updated in consultation with central staff. We will vote on this docet first to adopt the rules so that we can assign the matter into the appropriate committee and actually hold hearings at the appropriate time. The updated rules deleted some redundant sentences, added clarifying language, and added back a previous rule about not using electronic devices on the floor. It also includes updated names for the various committees. We will now take a vote to take Docet 0205 out of order.
I need to read it into the record.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Madam Clerk, please read it into the record.
Thank you. Docet 0205, Counselor Flynn offered the following order that rules of the Boston City Council be adopted for the municipal years 2022 and 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, we now take a vote to take Docet 02 out of order. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docet 0205 is now properly before the body. The Chair now moves for the adoption of Docet 0205. We will now take a roll call vote to adopt the rules.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I make my comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, Counsel Baker, I didn't see you there.
Thank you. I just want to say that, you know, congratulations on your presidency, and I just, as the dean of this delegation, the one that served in the longest continuous time, I mean, that might be a beef between Flaherty and I, but I have to get up and say that I'm uncomfortable here taking this vote, not knowing, this is the first time in doing this, I think this is my sixth time doing this, to not know where people are on this, are on committees, where we're going to bring the city, so, and I'm just saying that to voice my concern on this. I plan on voting for it. I think we, I mean, there could even be opportunities to invoke Rule 33 and put it in front of a committee and talk about it a little bit, because I, for one, feel like I'm somewhat in the dark on this, and I would like to see some sort of list of what the committees are at some point. It's after we vote on this now, and again, I'm just up here, I just wanted to stand and make that public known that I don't think that this was necessarily a great way to assign committees, nobody knowing where they were. The only time we saw them was when people that didn't have the authority to claim committees put them in the newspaper. That should come from you. We should all know where everybody is. I don't necessarily know where I am. I think I know where I am, but I have some major concerns moving forward with what the perception of what may happen. And I'll conclude my remarks there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Counsel Baker. Just for the record, I think I've tried over the last two months to engage every single counselor on committees, membership in committees, whether it was Chair, Vice Chair, or membership. I went out of my way as much as I could to be accessible during this period of time just to try to listen as much as I possibly could to my counselors on what they are interested in and trying to. I tried to make a decision that helps the city the best we, that I thought we could, and I tried to match people up best with their skills and education experience, so I'll continue to work with my colleagues, and we also have the option down the road. If people are not happy with any rules, we certainly can file a hearing order, and we could address it in the Rules Committee as well. The Chair now moves for the adoption of Docet 0205. We will now take a roll call vote to adopt the rules, and we would need nine votes to adopt the rules. Madam Clerk, if you can please, if you can please count the vote.
Thank you.
Call the vote.
For Docet number 0205, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bock.
Yes.
Counselor Bock, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, Counselor Flynn. Counselor Lara. Counselor Lara, yes. Counselor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. And Counselor Worrall.
Yes.
Counselor Worrall, yes. Mr. President, Docet number 0205, the rules for 2022, '23 have passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docet 0205 has passed. Communications from her honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, please read Docet 0158, please.
Thank you. Docet 0158, message and order for your approval, an order authorizing issuance of refunding bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $200 million. The current condition in the municipal bond market appears to be favorable for the city to potentially realize significant savings in debt service costs by refunding certain of its outstanding general obligation bonds.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docet 0158 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docet 0159, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $24,154,518.85 in the form of a grant for the federal FY 2020 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, known as SAFER, grant awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to be administered by the fire department. The grant will fund training for a class of 85 recruits at BFD Training Academy and reimbursement for their salaries for 36 months.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docet 0159 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docet 0160, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $5 million in the form of a grant, the grant payment, awarded by the United States Department of Treasury to be administered by the city's chief financial officer slash collector treasurer. The grant payment is made for the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund in the Treasury of the United States, established by Section 9901 of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docet 0160 will be referred to the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Could we take a five-minute recess, please?
Mr. Plender, you got to hold the vote on the emergency. Hold it.
[inaudible]
We are back in session. Madam Clerk, please read Docet 0161 to 0164 together, please.
Did you put Docet 0160 in committee? You did.
Yes, we, yep.
It's fine, to be sure.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Docet 0161, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $2,500,000 in the form of a grant for the FY 2021 National Sexual Assault Kit Initiative, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund three positions: coordinator, criminologist, and victim advocate; overtime, travel, and sub-awards and training. Docet 0162, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $527,586 in the form of a grant for the FY 21 Connected and Protect, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund clinician-directed project coordinator, community partnership for translation and outreach, and staff costs for Section 12 activities carried out by the Boston Emergency Services Team in partnership with the Boston Police Department Street Outreach Unit. Docet 0163, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $491,316 in the form of a grant for First Responders Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act Cooperative Agreement, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to be administered by the fire department. The grant will fund a collaborative effort between the Boston Fire Department First Responders, the Mayor's Office of Recovery Services, the Boston Public Health Commission, and community-based organizations to improve the city's response to opioid overdoses. Year four of a four-year grant. And Docet number 0164, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $272,013 in the form of a grant of the FY 2021 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund two criminologist positions: overtime, lab fees, lab supplies, I'm sorry, and continuing education expenses.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docet 0161 to 0164 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docet number 0165, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $200,000 in the form of a grant for the No Kid Hungry Grant, awarded by Share Our Strength, to be administered by the New Urban Mechanics. The grant will fund a fellowship to pilot solutions for increased access for healthy food for children and families that experience economic insecurity and food insecurity.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docet 0165 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities.
Docet 0166, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to expend an amount of $125,000 in the form of a grant for the federal FY 21 Violence Against Women Act Stop Grant, awarded by the U.S. Department of Justice, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund- The grant will fund a civilian violence advocate who provides services for victims in Jamaica Plain, East Boston, Charlestown, and overtime for all domestic violence advocates.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0166 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket 0167, message and order authorized in City of Boston to accept and expand an amount to $70,000 in the form of a grant for the FY 21 Sustainable Materials Recovery Program/Recycling Dividend, awarded by the Mass Office of Attorney General, to be administered by the Public Works Department. The grant will fund a cost-benefit analysis of programs that utilize economic incentives to increase residential waste diversion in Boston's Small Business Relief Fund.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, since this is a small amount, and it would go towards improving our waste program, I'd like to respectfully suspend and pass this grant at this time. All those in favor of suspending the rules in passage of this docket, please say aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0167 has passed.
Docket 0168, message and order authorized in City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $3,250 in the form of a grant for the National Arts Program Exhibit, awarded by the National Arts Program Foundation, to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund cash awards to the winners of the city's National Art Program Exhibit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, this is, again, a small grant, and it would go towards our arts and culture programs, so I'd like to respectfully ask to suspend and pass this grant. All those in favor of suspending the rules in passage of this docket, say aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0168 has passed.
Docket, sorry.
Reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, please read docket 1, 0169 through 0182 together, please.
Thank you. Docket 0169, communication was received from Timothy J. Smith, Executive Office of the Boston Retirement Board regarding certificate and transmittal to City Council of Boston Retirement System Calendar Year 2022 operating budget. Docket 0170, notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Seagon Idoo, Secretary of the Boards for the Dudley Square Realty Corporation, the Bruce C. Bowling Municipal Center, and the Ferdinand Building Development Corporation. Docket number 0171, notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Justin Sterrett as President of the Boards of the Dudley Square Realty Corporation, the Bruce C. Bowling Municipal Center, and the Ferdinand Building Development Corporation. Docket number 0172, notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Brianna Miller as Chief of Civic Engagement. Docket number 0173, notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Enrique Pepin as Director of the Office of Neighborhood Services. Docket number 0174, notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment, excuse me, of Dion Irish as Treasurer of the Boards for the Dudley Square Realty Corporation, the Bruce C. Bowling Municipal Center, and the Ferdinand Building Development Corporation. Docket number 0175, notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Stephen Alkins as a member of the Boston School Committee for Turm Expire on January 1st, 2026. Docket number 0176, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the Mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of December 15th, 2021. Docket number 0177, notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Justin Sterrett as Trustee of the Franklin Park Maintenance Trust Fund. Docket number 0178, notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Ricky Thompson as Trustee of the Franklin Park Maintenance Trust Fund. And docket number 0179, notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Justin Sterrett as a Chairperson of the Franklin Park Maintenance Trust. Docket number 0180, notices received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of Catherine P. Craven as a member of the City of Boston's Public Facilities Commission. Docket number 0181, notices received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of Lawrence D. M'Moly as a member of the Boston City of, I'm sorry, member of the City of Boston's Public Facilities Commission. And docket number 0182, notices received from the Friends of the Public Gardens of the Appointment of Abby Mason as trustee of the Boston Common Maintenance Fund.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0169 through 0182 will be placed on file.
Docket, would you like me to read both 183 and 184 together, Mr. President?
Yes, yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket 0183, notices received from Counselor Edwards of her resignation from the Boston City Council effective April 30th, 2022, at 11:59 p.m. And docket number 0184, notices received from the City Clerk of a vacancy in the City Council District 1 seat effective April 30th, 2022.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll be voting on this to accept the resignation from Counselor Edwards. This will allow us to proceed with calling for a special election. All those in favor of accepting docket 0183, say aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0183 has been accepted.
And placed on file.
And placed on file.
And docket 0184.
And 0184 will also be placed on file as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome. Motion?
Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Thank you. Docket 0185, Councilor Mahia and Bach offer the following petition for a special law regarding an act granting the City of Boston the authority to provide legal voting rights in municipal elections for City of Boston residents aged 16 and 17 years old.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Mahia. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my co-sponsor, Counselor Bach. I know we have a lot of dockets that we're going to be speaking on today, so I will be brief. We introduced this home rule petition last year, but unfortunately, we were not able to pass it or act on it. We are hoping that this year, we will get to the point where we can send it over to the Mayor's desk and then on to the State House. Young people have major impact in our community, but often do not have a say in the decisions that shape their lives. They pay taxes, but don't have a say on how they are spent. They have tried to, they are tried as adults, but are treated as minors in other courts of law. They are expected to advocate on behalf of their schools, but are not given an equal voice to do so. We are hoping to address that through this home rule petition. We look forward to the conversation and to moving forward on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mahia. At this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I just want to thank Counselor Mahia for her collaboration on this and say that it is indeed something that we're excited to really get to this term. I know that opinions are conflicted on this, but I will just say that a long time ago, I used to teach civics weekly in the Boston Public Schools, and what I saw was that when our young people dig into civic engagement at all levels, they are just as engaged and passionate and capable of being just as informed as adults. And I think often, the council sees that firsthand with advocacy from young Bostonians. And the reality is that our, our current system of having people become voters at age 18 almost picks the moment in people's life where they are most dislocated, and it's the worst moment for habit formation. So people are often, you know, starting new jobs, starting, you know, new schools, moving across the country, and as a result, we see young people's registration rates often quite low. But the reality is, if you sort of zoom out, you say, well, it's almost like we're designing it for that to be the case. Whereas if young people were able to start exercising the franchise on local issues, where they live, while they're in community, we'd be hearing these debates in school hallways, and I think we would be cultivating the habit of voting that would really last over time. In addition to the fact that I think that, as we see time and time again, our young people, they are prepared to make their voices heard, and they do deserve a say in what happens in our community. So looking forward to the conversation ahead. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Please, please raise your hand. Counselor Braden? Counselor Lara? Counselor Arroyo? Counselor Li Jun? Docket 0185 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket.
Excuse me. The Chair recognizes Counsel, Counselor Braden.
Mr. President, just a point of information, with passage of council rules in docket 0205, when will committee assignments be communicated to the members of the council? And will communication be filed with the clerk as part of, of the record? We're already assigning dockets to committees, but we don't have any idea who's actually on those committees and who will be chairing those committees. It's, it's not, it's not in our hands at this moment. Dockets are being assigned to committees right now, and without an understanding of the committee composition, members will not know if they would like to move for reconsideration or of recommendations for another committee. So I really feel at this moment, it's important that we, we, we address the committee assignment issue.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Just as a point of reference, the committees will be released right after this meeting.
After the meetings or during?
The, the, the members of the committee, the chairs and the vice chairs will be announced at that time.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please read docket 0186.
Docket 0186, Counselor Arroyo offered the following petition for a special law regarding an act providing certain retirement benefits for the widow of a former firefighter of the City of Boston.
At this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna keep this brief because I have a couple of refiles. This is a refile on survivor benefits for the wife of a Boston firefighter, Mr. Leroy or Roy Rodriguez, who died on the surgery table for injuries he sustained during the course of his duties. He was responding to a fire. He tore his Achilles tendon. He still went to this fire. He still fought this fire. And then afterwards, a few days later, he went to receive the emergency surgery, and he died on the operating table. For whatever reason, even though he received the, all of the sort of pomp and circumstance and celebration and acknowledgement in his funeral, and in his funeral rites of somebody who died on the line of duty, he did not receive the survivor benefits that his wife was entitled to. One of the major things here, besides the survivor benefits, is if you pass away in the line of duty, your, your children have a separate line to join the Boston Fire Department. His son would like to follow in his footsteps and join the Boston Fire Department, and so receiving this would, would allow him entry before he ages out. And so that is something that we're gonna move on hopefully soon, once we, once we know how that's gonna go. But that is what this is for the newer members who were not here last year when we had a hearing and introduced this. This is for the widow and his family, and this is to provide him with the survivor benefits and all that comes with that, that he is entitled to and his wife is entitled to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Anyone else like to speak on this matter or add their, add their name? Please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Li Jun, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Rell, and please add the Chair as well. Docket 01, 0185 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. 0186, I'm sorry. Will be, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0187.
Thank you. Docket 0187, Counselors Arroyo and Mahia offer the following petition for a special law regarding an act relative to the reorganization of the Boston School Committee.
At this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
I'll be brief again because I have a few of these in a row. This is the home rule petition to reform how the school committee looks in an elected format. This is obviously something that I'm looking to, and I think the council is looking to move within the earlier part of the council's term. This is not something that we'll do lightly. I hope, I fully hope and expect that this council will engage in what they want this to look like. I know that there's members on this council who want a fully elected body. There's folks who want district. There, there's folks who don't want district. There's folks who do want some version of a hybrid. And so my goal is, in the next couple of months, to hopefully have this go through working sessions and home rule, and maybe another hearing, an additional hearing, to make sure that all those voices are heard, that everybody sort of gets to, to come in and, and put their stamp on this, and hopefully we get to some, some compromise that is not necessarily perfect, but is good and does the work that the city has asked us to do when they voted overwhelmingly to, to enact an, an elected school committee. And so this is just a refile from last year, and, and there'll be more edits to this and more work done on this with the body. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. The other original co-sponsor, Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
And to my co-sponsor, Counselor Arroyo, last November, Boston residents made it perfectly clear that we need to return to an elected school committee, with over 99,000 Bostonians voting in favor of returning to an elected school committee. We have an obligation to make that happen and to make the process as engaging and as collaborative as possible. We have had the privilege of working alongside several amazing advocates, the Yes on Three Coalition, the NAACP, the Boston Education Equity, and more. We're going to continue engaging the public through a series of community conversations that we hope to be hosting soon, and I'm happy to say that we'll be doing it in various native languages to ensure that all voices are heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mahia. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
Please add my name as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Anyone else like to add their name? Please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Bach, Counselor Lara, Counselor Li Jun, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Rell, the Chair. Docket 0187 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0188, please.
Thank you. Docket 0188, Counselors Arroyo and Mahia offer the following ordinance preventing wage theft in the City of Boston.
The, the Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile. This is, this will also undergo some changes hopefully through the working process. Counselor Edwards has raised some, some good amendments and things that might happen here to ensure that it, it expands its scope from just sort of laborers and construction workers to folks who are in sort of our, our restaurant industry and places like that where we're dealing with wage theft on a regular basis. This is going to strengthen our wage theft sort of rules in the City of Boston. It's gonna put some teeth into that, and it's gonna do a number of different things to protect our workers, especially our blue collar workers, from having their wages stolen or from having to pay for or, or sort of deal with their injuries themselves and other really important protections that they've been asking for, for quite some time. And so I hope to get this done this year in partnership with the body. I'm grateful to Counselor Mahia for her partnership on this, and I think this is something everybody on this council is, is gonna be able to get behind when it's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. The Chair also, the Chair also recognizes Counselor Mahia. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to my co-sponsor, Counselor Arroyo. Members of my staff have experienced wage theft at previous jobs, y'all, don't worry. And relieving the experience brought something incredibly important to light, because it's not just the higher-ups who are experiencing wage theft. It's not the CO or the CFO or the general manager, no. It's the low-income workers, the people out on these sites doing the work. It's the people who have, who have, if $100 or so is missing out of their paycheck, it can't just be written off. I look forward to continuing this work and to pass I look forward to continuing this work and to passing it on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam, Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Wijen, Counselor, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Orell, and please add the Chair as well.
Docket 0189, it was sent to the committee.
It will be sent to the Committee on Government Operations.
Thank you. Docket 0189, Counselors Arroyo and Braden offer the following ordinance establishing protections for the city of Boston tree canopy.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile. This has to deal with, it's sort of growing our tree protection, our tree canopy protections in the city of Boston. Other cities like Wellesley and Cambridge and other neighborhoods and, and, sorry, other towns within the state have already enacted policies like this. The idea is to protect trees and sort of create a policy for not just public trees, but for private trees. Much of what we lose in terms of canopy is on private property. Much of it is due to clear cutting or development, and so this is to create some, some rules around that. I just want to remind everyone that we did have a hearing on this or informed our newer members that we had a hearing on this last year. The urban forestry group is working on this, and they're going to come up with an urban forestry plan. The idea is to sort of dovetail this with that and work in conjunction with sort of their findings and with what the groups and the advocates in there and their process have brought up and said, and sort of make something that's very powerful based off of sort of things that we're seeing in other cities and states, but also what this group is able to put together. And so this is something that will be filed. This is something that is very important and will hopefully be done this year, but it will be worked on in line with when the urban forestry group's plan and study comes up. Thank you. And I'd also like to thank Counselor Braden for being such a good partner on this.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my co-sponsor, Counselor Arroyo, on this important ordinance. Protecting the city's urban tree canopy is of great importance. As we heard in the hearing last year, we're losing a lot of our trees on privately owned land, and these, these have tremendous impacts on our urban environment and causing, contributing to heat island, urban heat island effects, flooding, and air quality. And I really look forward to continuing the conversation and hearing feedback from the administration on the proposed ordinance as well as updates from parks and recreation and the city's urban forestry plan, the heat resilience study, open space and recreational plan. Together, we really want to work to ensure equity and collectively plan for the future of the city as we help mitigate, to try and help mitigate the impacts of climate change that we're already experiencing in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else, would anyone like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Wijen, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Orell, and please add the Chair as well. Docket 0189 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket 0190, Counselor Bach offered the following order for hearing regarding increasing public housing in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And I know I have a run of mainly refiles now, so I will try to be brief on them. This, but really what, what holds them all together, they're all connected to a set of filings I did last year related to really making sure that we're using public land and public finance for public good and thinking robustly about how the city sort of uses those resources, and a number of them are focused on housing. So this one, folks, incumbents, former incumbents on the council will remember that I raised this last year. Public housing, as we talked about even in the past week, is increasingly in many of our neighborhoods, the only way that we're anchoring really low income Bostonians in the city. And it's something that we should recommit to, both in terms of the existing units and in terms of creating new units. And there's some amazing new financing tools to help us do that in more places and mix them in and add them on top of libraries. And I really want the city to be digging in on this and committing to this course of action, not least because where many of Boston's peer cities are prohibited from the federal government by something called a fair cloth limit from adding any new public housing units, the city of Boston is 2,500 units under our fair cloth limit. So we have 10,000 public housing units in this city with a waitlist of 50,000 families, and we have the ability, we have it in our control to increase that number by 25%. And if we added those 2,500 units, it would take capital costs to get them up and running, but once certified, the, the federal government is obligated to support them with operating costs. And, and there's a new program called RAD that also helps us get more sustainable subsidies. So this sounds kind of technical, but from my perspective, it's probably our best bet at getting a significant tranche of new extremely low income housing, and it's something that I want us to be pursuing very vociferously and in partnership with the administration in the coming term. So I look forward to having a hearing on it soon, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
President, please add my name as a co-sponsor, and just want to commend the previous speaker for her great work and constant advocacy on public housing issues. As someone who's born in public housing and knows the importance of public housing in our city, but also as it pertained to my family, public housing was there when my grandfather had died very suddenly, when my grandmother had two children, my mother and her brother, and it was a safety net and lifeline for them. So I think between the three, myself, my mother, and my grandmother, I think we have probably about a combined 100 years of the Old Harbor Project, which is down in Maryland and McCormick. So I've always been steadfast in sticking up and fighting for folks in public housing, making sure their quality of life is, is consistent with quality of life for all the city. And I know that Counselor Bach has been a staunch advocate, so again, please sign my name and look forward to an expedited hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Braden? Okay. If anyone else would like to add their name, please raise your hand. Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Lara, Counselor Wijen, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Orell, and please add the Chair as well. Docket 0190 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Docket 0191, Counselor Bach offered the following order for a hearing regarding zoning relief for affordable projects.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Folks will remember, I was very grateful for the council's unanimous support of our zoning amendment last session to eliminate parking minimums for affordable housing developments after we've seen them used repeatedly as a bad faith tactic against those developments. I was very pleased that that passed unanimously, not only here at the council, but also at the BPDA Board and the Zoning Commission, and was signed into law by the mayor at the end of last year. But there's more to do, and the reality is that every time we get a new affordable housing development permitted and then actually built in the city, we get real families and people who are stuck on sofas and in shelters out of those situations and into stable housing. And when we think about it like that in a people-focused way, we know that we have to accelerate the pace of passage of, of permitting of affordable homes. And so I think there's a number of ways in which our current permitting process does not create a fast track for affordable developments. And I know this was a subject of lots of conversation in the election season last year, and I think it's time for us to do something about it. And we know from our previous iterations that it takes some doing to get zoning amendments through, because there are these multiple layers. So we really wanted to start early and say this should be a priority for the coming session. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the lead sponsor on this very, very important hearing order. I think, I think we forget just the sheer scale of what we're up against in terms of the need for affordable housing in our city. I know from Alston Brighton, our CDC has a waitlist of 17,000 folks who are families who are needing and waiting for affordable housing opportunities in our, in our neighborhood. And this is reflected all across our city. So there's a huge level of urgency here, and I really hope that we can start to be really creative in, with regard to development in the city and trying to pair, sort of thinking about all the huge amount of lab development and trying to leverage some additional funds and space for affordable housing in the context of all the, the lab development that's happening in our city. So that we are anticipating an increase in numbers of workers in our, in these facilities, but those, those folks are going to need housing. So I think as, rather than anticipating that all the workforce is going to be coming in from the suburbs, that we will actually be housing them in our neighborhoods, that they will work, live, and play in our neighborhoods and contribute to the civic life of our neighborhoods. And the affordable housing piece of the equation is critically important to that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? And would anyone like to add their name? Please add Counselor Baker. Please add Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Wijen, Counselor Lara, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Orell, and the Chair. Docket 0191 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Could I, Madam Clerk, could I take a one-minute recess?
May I just ask Counselor Braden?
Yep.
Counselor Braden, did you want your name added?
Please, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure.
Please add Counselor Braden. Madam Clerk, may I take a one-minute recess?
Certainly.
Could I ask the people that are in the audience, please put on a mask?
We're in a public building.
The, the city of Boston regulations require anyone that enters the city, city hall have a, have a mask on, a face covering on. Would you, would you? Would you please, would you please put your face coverings on?
I have to wear a mask.
Do you, do you, do you, do you refuse to, to refuse?
I'm wearing a mask.
We're going to take a, we're going to take a 15-minute recess at this time. Thank you.
I said I didn't wear a mask the whole time.
I know.
We've all day, we're all unemployed, okay? We're all unemployed. We've all day, sir. Thank you. I'm wearing a mask, sir.
If the councils could exit the ionella chamber at this time. Thank you.
Flaherty, why the change?
Yeah.
What happened, Flaherty?
What happened, Clarity?
Hello?
I believe it is being recorded, so.
Hey lady, I can't hear you for a second, I'm just trying to update my volume. Does that work? Can you hear me, Ed?
I can hear you.
Are we recording?
I would assume we're recording, so assume everything is on the record.
I actually don't think it's recording just yet, I don't see the recording button, it's usually right up at the top.
Mr. President, Kerry here, we are live on air, ready to get started when you are. Just on standby to make sure the clerk can get on.
Thank you Kerry. And could I ask, could I ask my colleagues also if you're, when you're not speaking, if you could, if we all could be on mute?
No, grilled cheese? Grilled cheese with tomato?
Counselor Murphy, just wanted to let you know you're not on mute.
Grilled cheese and tomato sounds nice.
They were gonna try to get me a BLT, and I was like, nope. Give me a ham and cheese. Rose beef. Well, my staff definitely saw, Julia, how yours brings you food, so one day I said, wait, does anyone bring me lunch like that?
Actually, just for the record, they don't bring me lunch, I actually pay for it, and treat everything to lunch, and then they get lunch, just for the record, there, Counselor Murphy, spreading lies up in here.
Alright guys, I'm gonna, can I put everybody, can you please go on mute, because we're gonna be starting in a second. Kerry, could you let me know when Clerk Feeny is on?
Absolutely, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you Kerry. Give you a quick update, everybody, we're just waiting for the clerk to come on, and then we will continue the meeting.
Alright, get on with the show.
Thank you, thank you Clerk Feeny. Clerk Feeny, just in the interest of our transparency, can we do another roll call vote? Just to make sure that we're all, we're all present?
Wonderful, thank you, that's a great idea. Let me just find my, so. I just wanna, and as your lady has mentioned, we're going to have to do roll call votes for personnel and consent agenda. So, roll call number two. Alright, so, Counselor Arroyo.
Present.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Bock.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Lara.
Present.
Counselor Luizhen.
Present.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Present.
And Counselor Arroyo.
Present.
Great, how did I do on that one?
That was, that was excellent, Madam Clerk, thank you for taking the roll call again.
Thank you, my pleasure, my pleasure. I believe, Mr. President, that we were on docket number 0192, perhaps?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, so, would you like me to read it into the record again?
Yes, Madam Clerk, please, please read docket 0192.
Thank you. Docket 0192, Counselor Bock offered the following order for hearing regarding using planning and land use tools for public good.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Bock, Counselor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and I'd ask, Mr. President, if Counselor Ruth Lee Luizhen could be added as an original co-sponsor?
Yes, Counselor Luizhen will be added as an original co-sponsor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. This docket, it's again a refile, but we didn't have a chance to talk about it in the latter half of last year, so I am hoping to hold a hearing on it soon. I really think that there is an opportunity for this council to think about how we should transform the use of the Boston Planning and Development Agency's planning and land use tools for the public good. There's a really strong precedent here, in the 1980s, the Boston Redevelopment Authority used those powers to enable the Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative to assemble a land trust in a 60-acre area. It was actually the first time that such governmental powers were used on behalf of a nonprofit anywhere in the country. That happened in the Flynn administration, and as I think people know, Dudley Square Neighborhood Initiative continues to operate as a land trust today, and has really become the model for land trusts all over the country, and increasingly also in Boston, as we're seeing a real renaissance of the community land trust movement, motivated, of course, in part by the great housing pressure that we're under as a city. And I really think that Boston should be building on this past tradition and using BPDA tools to secure more land for community purposes and long-term affordability, like what land trusts can ensure, and that there are opportunities, when we think about both things that we're gonna need to do, these are the building, housing, public social housing places like I was talking about earlier, and also when we think about kind of some of the climate mitigation land uses, I think we're gonna need these tools. But at the same time, we want to constrain and prevent sort of some of the past of urban renewal, and this is all going to come to conversation before the council very imminently, because the city's existing urban renewal zones are set to expire in April without some form of mayoral and council action, so I expect we'll hear from the administration on this, and there's, and there's probably some of those that we'll want to talk about expiring, and some things that we may want to talk about transforming in this way for the public good. So, I hope to be able to have a hearing quite soon to discuss this, and wanted to file this hearing order so that we could get that conversation started. And I want to thank Counselor Luizhen for joining me in this, I know that she won't be speaking today, saving, keeping her powder dry for a future occasion, but I'm grateful to her partnership on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you Counselor Bock. Would any other council like to speak on this matter? Would any other council like to?
I think Counselor Arroyo, oh no, I'm sorry.
Please raise your hand if you'd like to be a sponsor of this. And add your name. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Lorel, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Lara, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Murphy, and add the Chair, please. Docket 0192 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0193.
Certainly. Docket 0193, Counselor Bock offered the following order for hearing regarding reducing barriers to securing rental housing in Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Counselor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. This again is a refile, and it's actually something that I was pleased to offer in partnership with former Council President and Acting Mayor Janey, and also Counselor Campbell, related to the rental barriers, the barriers that folks in Boston, especially low-income folks in Boston, face to renting. And we talk a lot about the basic financial barrier, or how much the cost of housing is these days. Oh, Mr. President, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna interrupt myself, can I suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Luizhen and Counselor Fernandez-Anderson as original co-sponsors?
Yes, yes Madam, yes Counselor Bock.
Thank you so much, sorry for that. So, yeah, grateful, as I said, I lost two colleagues who were collaborators on this, so grateful to have two other freshman colleagues joining, and again, they'll save their remarks for the hearing. But, you know, we dug in, in October 2020, there was a housing committee hearing, we talked to the BHA about the barriers that their voucher holders face, and one of the things that we heard was even when somebody has a voucher that can pay for rent, often there are credit checks that are being imposed, there are enormous thumps that are required for first-class security, these are things that folks in Boston who rent know well, but they act as a kind of invisible barrier often to housing that should in theory be accessible, and they're a huge burden on our families. And we see, and we see that both credit and other things like criminal background check overutilization can really impact in particular our black and brown families in the city. And so, what, we sort of talked about this informationally last session, and we decided we wanted to get to a next step of actually working on a real ordinance and figuring out how to put some teeth into removing these barriers when they don't do any good, and they aren't necessary, for instance, a voucher holder, their rent is guaranteed by the federal government, you don't need to also be checking their credit. And this is something I'm looking forward to us partnering with the administration on. I think other cities across the country have done a lot to, to set better best practices than we have, and even in our own programs, I think we have in some of our affordable programs sponsored by the city, credit checking requirements that we probably should look again at. So, I'm looking forward to talking about this and seeing how low-income families can not be locked out of housing in this way, and we can therefore expand access to safe and stable housing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bock, would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Please raise your hand. Would anyone else like to, would anyone else like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Lorel, Counselor Braden, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Baker, the Chair. Thank you, docket 0192 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
No, that's 193.
0193.
Madam Clerk, please read docket 019.
Mr. President? Mr. President, may I? Mr. President, may I move for reconsideration? I think 0193, if you consider it, might be better suited to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Yes, 0193 referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. We had that originally, so I apologize for that mistake. Thank you for bringing that forward, Counselor Bach. I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0194.
Docket 0194, Counselor Bach and Braden offered the following order for hearing regarding review of COVID-19 recovery funds.
At this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Bach.
Thank you, Mr. President. And could I please add Counselor Worrell? Suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Worrell as an original cosponsor?
Yes, Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Worrell as an original cosponsor. You have the floor, Counselor Bach.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. As folks know, we are sitting with significant federal funding for COVID-19 recovery. And one of the most important tasks for this council in the months ahead is going to be appropriating that. And additionally, some of the most important work that the council did in the past term was appropriating a first tranche of that to deal both with immediate emergencies and a number of related to the pandemic and then also a number of kind of our ongoing emergencies, whether you're talking about affordable housing or the climate crisis or challenges of substance abuse. And so this is really a hearing order to do a few things. It's designed to give us a space to talk about the allocation of those monies going forward. But it's also designed to talk about some of the recent guidance that's been issued by the federal government about how those funds are to be used and overseen and to review how the monies that were already appropriated by the council, namely on June 30, 2021, how those are being used. So I think that, you know, I think we've already seen some great proposals from the Wu administration around using ARCO recovery funds for public transit, which this council supported. And then, most recently, public housing, something that will come to the council. But I think it's important for us to be talking about these holistically as a council and prioritizing them. And I know that also there's been significant. Many councils have voiced support for significant further funds going to housing, both affordable rental and homeownership. So I think this is an area where we're proud of the council action last year. And we want to. And I know, Mr. President, that you want us to sort of step quickly and strenuously into making sure that we're getting these dollars out where they can have the most impact on our residents in Boston. So I'm looking forward to this and grateful to Counselor Braden and Counselor Worrell for their partnership on this as well.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Any other counselor like to speak on this matter? Oh, I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to amplify Counselor Bach's comments. I think this hearing will be an opportunity for us to hear about the city's methodology for dispensing a very significant amount of funding, community engagement processes, and reviewing the impact of funded programs and services that have what impact these funds will have on services in ensuring an equitable recovery. Now that we're operating under a new charter, this council holds a bunch of repowers together with the mayor for the first time. I look forward to our ongoing partnership with the administration to ensure recovery relief funds are appropriately appropriated in the most efficient and equitable way. So thank you. I look forward to this conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Would any other counsel like to speak on this matter? Would any counsel like to add their name? Please raise your hand, please. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Lara, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Luiz Jan, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Mejia, and add the Chair as well. Thank you. The docket 0194 will be referred to the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0195. Madam Clerk, I think you're on mute.
I had. Sorry about that. I had someone in my office. Docket 0195, Counselor Bach offered the order for hearing regarding city-level conservation core for Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Since I first filed this, there's actually been a great deal of progress on this towards grants for organizations providing green job training and a youth green jobs pilot for Boston. For context, last year, as part of the council's supplemental budget appropriation, we appropriated $3 million of those rescue funds I was just speaking about to support a green jobs pilot. And I had the chance to go with Chief Marianna Whiteham and down to Philadelphia, where the Philadelphia Power Corps are the best-in-class model for how you actually, you know, can really expand pathways into green jobs for our urban folks in Boston and then actually create a real pathway into those being good public jobs and good private jobs. And, you know, and we're thinking here about everything from installing green infrastructure to urban forestry to building retrofitting. And like I said, in Philly, they've really laid out a pretty model program that's having a lot of success and operating at pretty large scale. So we think it makes sense to sort of do an initial pilot in Boston that's modeled on that. And so I was very pleased to join Chief Whiteham and then Acting Mayor Janey and a whole set of city departments in launching this pilot back in October. And then the Wu administration in continuing it, hiring an executive director. So we're really excited about this work. But we want to get the council a full update and also think about sort of how we expand it and ground it going forward. Because the conversation that this body has had repeatedly is about the fact that if we don't intertwine a response to our climate crisis with a response to our racial and economic inequality crisis in the city of Boston, we won't be able to solve either. So I think this is a really important dual-purpose thing. And I'm excited that even in the midst of transition across a few different mayorships, we've been able to really move the ball forward on this. So thank you so much, Mr. President. President, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bach. Would any other counsel like to speak on this matter? Would any other counsel like to? Please raise your hand if you'd like to sponsor this. To add your name, please add, Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Worrell, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Lara, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Baker, Counselor Luiz Jan, Counselor Flaherty, and the Chair as well. Docket 0195 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice Resiliency in PAX. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0196.
Docket 0196, Counselor Bach offered the following order for hearing regarding municipal broadband for the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'd ask that you suspend Rule 12 and allow me to add Counselor Braden and Counselor Mejia as original cosponsors.
Madam Clerk, will you please add Counselor Braden and Counselor Mejia?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Bach. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Internet is rapidly becoming as essential a public utility as water and sewer, yet too many Bostonians find themselves locked out of Internet service or stuck with very second-rate Internet service, which then, you know, as we've seen in the pandemic, can mean being locked out of school, public meetings like this, critical information, and key services. And I think often folks don't realize that in fact, we do not regulate Internet broadband in this country like a utility, like something that everybody needs. We continue to regulate it much more like an amenity, something that should be provided to people who can pay. And I think we've just seen the reality that that doesn't reflect the world as we live in today. So I'm a big believer that the city of Boston should be using the public right-of-way to build out an even more robust municipal broadband network to secure affordable and high-quality Internet access for all Bostonians. I think this is a sort of centuries-scale thing that we need to do. And I think that much like our predecessors discovered that private sewers and private train lines weren't going to work and realized they really needed to be publicly-supported systems with public access. I think we're going to need to do the same for the Internet. Instead, what we've traditionally done is partnered with our, you know, with the large providers, the handful of large providers. But for a variety of reasons, I think that our infrastructure is sort of stalling out in this middle place where, in theory, every household has access, but the quality of what they have access to is very variable. And even the many good emergency programs that helped people get plugged in over the pandemic are really providing a scale of access in terms of speed and how much you can download and upload. That's just a fraction of what people need to compete and participate in the modern economy and civic space. So I'm very interested in us expanding the existing VONET work to lay fiber connections beyond municipal buildings, which we've done recently, and the BHA, which we've done from those hubs out to actual households. And I think experimenting with actually providing Internet to the household levels, again, not just the community facilities of the public housing developments, but to the actual households would be a really great way to pilot this. And I was proud to partner with Counselor Mejia in advocating for municipal broadband study to be put in the budget last budget season. But I think that we need to check in on sort of what that turned into, RFP-wise, and how we really move forward on opening up this conversation and pushing for a reimagining of this vital public service. So looking forward to that and grateful to both my cosponsors, Counselor Braden and Mejia. And to you, Mr. President, who really pushed last session on digital equity. And I know is a big advocate for this. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Would any other counsel like to speak on this matter? At this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Bach for adding us as an original cosponsor. We saw throughout the pandemic how just how important it is to have stable, reliable Internet connection. Since the pandemic began, our office has worked to ensure that information justice reaches all communities across the city. We secured budget funding to create a study to explore how, not whether, but how the city can implement municipal broadband. But we know that there's still so much more that needs to be done. And there are large pockets of neighborhoods in Boston, particularly in black and brown and low-income communities that do not have the access they need in order to be online. This is an equity issue at the very heart. And as a city, we should be moving with urgency to make sure that everyone is able to have reliable Internet access as a right, not a privilege. And I look forward to this conversation and to working alongside Counselor Bach and reading on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like?
Mr. President, I think Counselor Braden is also an original cosponsor.
Thank you.
I apologize. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and thank Counselor Bach for including me as an original cosponsor. I think the whole issue of broadband access is totally amplified by the crisis that we've been in with in this past two years with COVID. It is very apparent at this point that broadband should be viewed as a municipal utility rather than a luxury for folks who can afford it or those who have access. We work with a lot of our constituents or elders. Increasingly, access to medical care, telehealth is conducted on the Internet. And our schools are using remote learning to a much greater extent. Our students in second and third level education are using the Internet for classes as well. We have families who are trying to access their classes with two or three students sharing the family's iPhone cellphone. And this is not appropriate. So this is a really critically important issue. And I really hope that we can move forward in a very productive way on this issue this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Would any other counsel like to speak on this matter?
I will speak very briefly. This is a critical issue facing the city, especially residents in public housing as well and BHA housing. They don't have the same access to digital access as other residents. And this is an issue of equity, but it's also an issue of fairness in making sure that our public housing residents have the same equal access to the Internet as any other neighborhood. So I want to make sure that we, when we do work on this issue, that we also include residents of public housing because we want to make sure that they're included in every aspect of the success of Boston. So thank you, Counselor Bach and the others for bringing this forward. Would any other counselor like to speak or raise their hand? Any counsel like to raise their? Sponsor, please raise your hand. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Lara, Counselor Worrell, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Luiz Jan. I don't see any other hands. Docket 0196 will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovative Technology. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0197.
Certainly. Docket 0197, Counselor Mejia offered the following order for hearing addressing civil rights and the creation of sanctuary safe spaces in Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to add Counselor Louis Jean to join me as a cosponsor.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Luiz Jan as an original cosponsor. You have the floor, Counselor Mejia.
Thank you. And I would also like to move to substitute the language of this docket to reflect updates we've received from the BPD since the original filing of this docket. This docket is basically a refile from our office.
Counselor Mejia, I don't mean to cut you off. I apologize. Madam Clerk, could I just confirm that all of the counselors have received the amended docket?
I believe so. I know I have it. And I believe it was sent to everyone. It should be on their computer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to let my colleagues know that this information was sent to you email and it should be in your inbox. Let us take a minute if you want to check just to confirm that you have it. If you don't have it, please raise your hand and we will make sure we get it to you. But it should be there.
Actually, the city message had distributed them at the beginning of the meeting in the chambers.
Okay.
We got a copy at our chairs, at our desk.
Excellent. At this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is basically a refile from our office's first hearing order. We held a hearing on this back in December. And we, wow, many, many, it feels like forever ago. And we've been working with amazing teams of advocates ever since. We plan to file something in addition to this in the near future. But in the meantime, we're just refiling this docket. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Would any other counsel like to speak on this matter?[1748.56] Would any counsel like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Madam Clerk, please add Council Worrell. Please add Council Lara. Please add Council Bach. Please add, please add the chair. Please add Council Braden. Please add Council Murphy. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, docket 0197 will be referred to the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigration Advancement.
And?
Okay. Madam Clerk, let me go back. 0198 will be referred to the Committee on Education.
We haven't, Sarah, we we're going to read 01.
Okay.
Thank you. Docket 0198, Council Mahia offered the following order for hearing addressing sexual assaults and harassment in Boston Public Schools.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would just like to add Council Worrell as an original co sponsor, please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please add Council Worrell. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you. Again, this is just a refile, an issue that we raised during last year's hearing on the role of school police and was inspired by some of the testimonies we heard directly from students who were experiencing sexual harassment in their schools. We know that this is an issue that is, you know, concerning safety, but also the social and emotional well being of students who have been sexually harassed and assaulted in their schools. And this is an important issue to our office. And we're incredibly grateful for Council Worrell's leadership and stepping in to help us shepherd this conversation along. As someone who deeply cares about the Boston Public Schools, it is an honor to work alongside his office to highlight the voices of the young people who have been impacted by this. So thank you, Council Worrell, for your partnership in this journey.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Mahia. Would any other counsel like to speak on this matter? Would would any other counsel like to add their name? Madam, Madam Clerk, can you please add Council Bach, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Lara, Council Louie Jean, Council Braden? Madam Clerk, docket 0198 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Madam, Madam Clerk, please read docket 0199, please.
Certainly. Docket 0199, Council Mahia offered the following order for hearing on state receivership for Boston Public Schools.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair recognizes Council Mahia.
Thank you, Mr. President. We filed this last year as a resolution. And it was clear, thank you to the feedback from my colleagues, that we needed to have a richer discussion around this particular issue and topic. So what we decided to do is have an opportunity to work with the education advocates from all backgrounds united on the goal of ensuring that our community is leading the voices on all things that deal with education. And we need to hear from our local and state officials in regards to what the plan is moving forward to ensure that we're not just bringing about change for the sake of change. I look forward to learning and working alongside others on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahia. Would any other counsel like to add? Would any other counsel like to speak on this matter? Would any other counsel like to add their name? Please raise your hand, please. Madam Clerk, please add Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Lara, Council Royal, Council Braden, Council Louie Jean, Council Worrell. Docket 019, 0199 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0200, please.
Certainly. Docket 0200, Council Mahia offered the following order for hearing on government transparency and accountability towards surveillance equipment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would also like to add Council Arroyo as an original sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please add Council Arroyo as an original co sponsor, please. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
As many of you know, back in December, we learned that the Boston Police Department used funds obtained through civil asset forfeiture to purchase surveillance equipment without our knowledge. As a city council, it is unacceptable that we are getting more information about what our police department is doing from the news than we are from our own city. This is an issue of government accountability and transparency. We filed this hearing order because we need accountability and oversight. Our hope is that we can use this hearing to ensure that we are putting a spotlight on any hidden part of money, especially money being used without our consent. This is an important conversation, and I truly do hope that we can move forward quickly to hold a hearing so that we can get to the bottom of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Arroyo. Council Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Council Mahia. This is something that I believe is part of course of duty with what we've already sort of done on the council in the last term in terms of surveillance oversight. I do believe that protecting civil liberties and protecting our communities are not mutually exclusive. And doing so is dependent on our ability to ensure transparency and accountability. These things are part of a social contract. We socially agree to be police. But I think that the way that we do that is by ensuring that when we're, the methods that are used and how we use them are transparent to the public and that there's public buy in in those ways in which they decide to engage with our communities. To me, this is a continuation of our efforts to do so and part of our responsibility as an oversight body to do so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor, are you muted? Thank you. Thank you. Would any other city council like to speak on this matter? Any city council like to add their name? Please raise your hand, please. Madam Clerk, please add Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Lara, Council Bach, Council Louie Jean, Council Worrell, Council Braden. Thank you. Docket 0200, refer to the Committee on Government Accountability, Transparency and Accessibility. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0201 and 0202 together, please.
Thank you. Docket 0201, Council Braden offered the following order for hearing regarding the Jackson Man and Horace Man Boston BPS school communities. And docket number 0202, an order for hearing regarding the BCYF Jackson Man Community Center and Services in Austin-Brighton.
The chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank you and for taking these two dockets together. As many of you know, the Jackson Man campus in Union Square in Alston is a location of the Jackson Man Elementary School, the Horace Man School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, and also the site of our only BCYF Community Center in Austin-Brighton. The building has fallen into extensive disrepair. The site hosting the Jackson Man K-8 School and the School for the Deaf will be closed in the summer of 2022. This summer, the Jackson Man Elementary School will not exist any longer after this summer. And then the Horace Man School for the Deaf will remain on that site for another year. And it's unclear what arrangements have been made for relocation of the BCYF. The importance of these schools cannot be overstated. Both schools serve populations of high need students, including primarily the students on the autism spectrum and multilingual sheltered English instruction programs at the Jackson Man. And the deaf community's unique needs are served within the Horace Man School for the Deaf. The Horace Man is the only school, public school for the deaf serving deaf students in Massachusetts and has established an ecosystem for connecting programs and services in Austin-Brighton, including partnerships with BC, Boston College and Boston University. Boston University has an educational program that specializes in deaf education. And also the close proximity of Deaf Inc. in Union Square is another part of the ecosystem that supports the deaf community and the deaf families with students who are deaf in Austin-Brighton. So it's really critically important that in the future, as we plan the way forward, that these, that we consider the plans to locate the Horace Man School for the Deaf in Austin-Brighton going forward. In the short term, there's arrangements being made to locate the Horace Man School for the Deaf temporarily in the Edwards School in Charleston, beginning at the beginning of the school year of 2024, I think. But and we have applied for the Boston and the Massachusetts School Building Authority for this to be, for the rebuild of the Horace Man School for the Deaf to be considered for funding. Again, these are very critical issues. And I think it's really important to have a more extensive conversation about the future of these, the school communities at the Horace Man and the Jackson Man. Then on to the BCYF Community Center. The Jackson Man facility also houses a BCYF Community Center, the Jackson Man Community Center. And it will be greatly impacted. Again, we don't have any idea where this community center will be relocated on a temporary basis or what the plans are for rebuilding the community center. Austin-Brighton has a population of 77,000 residents. And the Jackson Man Community Center provides critical community services, including childcare, emergency shelter, cooling stations for elders in extreme heat and heating stations in extreme cold. And in addition, it also is a voting place for, you know, for five precincts in Austin-Brighton. So the loss or even temporary disruption of the community center and its services is, will be of great concern to the community in Austin-Brighton. So I, I'm asking to have an extensive assessment of community needs and capital improvements within the Austin-Brighton to assess where we can relocate this community center in the short term. And then work with BCYF and the Office of Neighborhood Services and Public Facilities to find a suitable accommodations in the short term. But also, I hope that we can have a deep conversation about the services provided by our BCYF Community Center in Austin and Brighton and make a, make a firm plan that we can share with the community before the center will actually be closed in the summer of 2023. So thank you for your consideration of this important matter.
Thank you, Council Braden. Would any other city council like to speak on this matter? I would like to speak briefly on it. Providing as much assistance to our students that are deaf and hard of hearing is critical. This school, the Horace Man School, supports students across Boston and Greater Boston. And we're going into the budget season now. We must all work together to make sure that our students with disabilities have the same rights and access and services as any other student. So, you know, this is a question of respect and dignity for our students with disabilities as well, the civil rights issue. Would any other city council like to sponsor this matter as well? If you do, please raise your, please raise your hand. Please add Council Lara, Council Bach, Council Royal, Council Louie Jean, Council Flaherty, Council Mahia, Council Murphy. I'm sorry, and Council Worrell, Council Fernandez Anderson. Madam Clerk, docket 0201 will be referred to the Committee on Education. And docket 0202 will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovative Technology.
And Mr.?
Mr. President, I'm sorry. I wanted to sign on to that docket. If you can reconsider, thank you.
Yes, yes. Madam, Madam Clerk, could we add Council Baker, please?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And may I ask, do the same counselors want to vote on docket 0202 for the BCYF piece? Are they the same that are going to support that? It looks like I'm getting a lot of nodding heads, so I guess they are. Okay, great. So that would be Council Arroyo, Council Baker, Council Bach, Council Braden's sponsor, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louie Jean, Council Mahia, Council Murphy, Council Worrell, and Council Flynn. I believe you spoke on it, so you.
Yes, yes. Please add the chair as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I just wanted to make sure we had everyone recognized to their support.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, will you please read docket 0203, please?
Certainly. Docket 0203, Council Braden offered the following order for the City of Boston to submit a count question resolution operation case to the United States Census Bureau.
At this time, the chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin with the context, that give some context to this order, which I see suspension of the rules and passage of today is in, is in line with our city being on record intending to challenge the results of the 2020 federal census. In October 30th, 2021, Mayor Gini submitted a letter to the branch chief of the U.S. Census Bureau Count Question Resolution Program, expressing the City of Boston's intent to challenge the 2020 census enumeration due to population concerns related to group quarter, foreign born, and hard to count populations. However, I believe this order is necessary because the Census Bureau did not begin formally accepting the Count Question Resolution Program requests from local government units until January 3rd, 2022, this year. This order seeks to ensure that the city follows through in formally initiating a review of our census count. I want to make sure that we are all clear that challenging our census count will not revise data for redistricting purposes. But official revisions to enumeration data will more accurately inform future population estimates, assure the accurate distribution of federal funds, and provide, provide improved demographic data for policymaking decisions and for planning purposes. This official review process is necessary given the challenges of the 2020 census at the outset of the pandemic, with Census Day beginning on April 1st, 2020, just two weeks after the city was shut down. These challenges impacted the accuracy of counting underserved communities, in particular renters, recent immigrants and college students, and those in correctional facilities. In addition to this operation, the Census Bureau is also proposing a group quarters review process, which is essential, given Boston's initial census data reflected 5,000 fewer college students and group quarters compared to the city's own data through the Housing Office. Austin-Brighton in particular would be distinctly impacted by an uncorrected undercount as our residents include large populations who are renters, college and postgraduate students, and foreign born and recent immigrants. The BPDA's own census data analysis suggested that Austin's population failed by 5.9%, with a 40% decline in the group quarter population, suggesting that the college drawn population in Austin may not have been correctly counted in the wake of the pandemic evacuation. As current inaccurate census count is. As current inaccurate census count is instrumental in ensuring that federal funding for education, healthcare, housing and transportation, food and nutrition, and other social services, and our own city planning and services reflect the full extent of our residents' needs. In order to ensure that all of our Boston communities are counted and that the Boston census counters accurately reflects our residents, the City of Boston must submit a count-question resolution operation case to the U.S. Census Bureau. And for this reason, I seek suspension of the rules and passage of this order today. This, as I said, this opportunity to question the census count came into effect on January 3rd, and it is a time-sensitive issue, and I hope that I urge my colleagues to support this initiative today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Braden. I know Councilor Braden is seeking to suspend and pass. That we also have the option of putting it in the Committee on City Services in Innovative Technology, but I think out of respect for Councilor Braden and for the importance of this hearing order resolution, I would recommend that we suspend and pass as well. Madam Clerk, could we take a roll call vote on that?
Absolutely. It is.
Yeah, docket 0203.
0203, correct. We have to do roll call votes and all these, so I'm just trying to catch up. So docket 0203 for suspension and passage, Councilor Arroyo. Muted.
Yes, and if we can add my name as well?
Thank you. Thank you. Council Baker.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Council Bach.
Yes, and please add my name.
Thank you. Council Braden is the sponsor.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Edwards. Council Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson is yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes, and please add my name, Madam Clerk.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes, and please add my name.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara.
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Lou Jean.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lou Jean, yes. Council Mejia.
Yes, and please add my name.
Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes, and please add my name.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell. And we will just add those names.
Madam Clerk, could I also ask if anyone didn't add their name, if they would like to add their name, could you also raise your hand, please?
Sure.
So, Madam Clerk, could you also add Council Fernandez-Anderson, Council Lara, Council Worrell? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Thanks.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. President.
Yes, Council Braden, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Is this on matter 203?
Yes, a motion.
Suspension.
Council Braden, is this on docket 0203?
No, it's with regard to the rules.
We haven't, we haven't, we did the roll call.
Oh, beg your pardon, Madam.
That's okay. I just want to make sure after all your work that we make sure we get this passed.
Very good. Sorry about that.
Thank you. No, not at all.
Sorry, was my name added to 0203? Just want to make sure.
Yes, it was. Thank you, Counselor. Mr. President, docket number 0203 has passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, will you please read docket 0204, please?
Certainly. Docket 0204, Council Bach and Braden offer the following order for hearing regarding home ownership assistance, including for first-generation homebuyers.
At this time, the chair recognizes Council Bach. Council Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And could I ask to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Lou Jean as a original co-sponsor, as the third original co-sponsor?
Yes. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Lou Jean as an original co-sponsor?
Definitely.
Council Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you. Sorry, this one is out of order, but rounding out my housing policy and public good filings today. This one is about continuing to focus our work on first generation, on first time. Sorry, I think I hear somebody else. All right, I'm just gonna. So this is about really focusing on the city's work for first-time homebuyers, and effectively first-generation homebuyers. In Boston, as I think everyone here knows, the homeownership gap has both been driven by and has perpetuated the harmful legacy of residential segregation. And because of racial disparities and intergenerational wealth transfers, expanding homeownership assistance and supports for first-generation homebuyers specifically is one of the most effective ways to directly target the racial wealth gap here in Boston. And we had had for a long time first-time homebuyer programs in the city, but it was just last year that the city started supporting the work of the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Alliance, MAHA, in really targeting these first-generation homebuyers. Because again, it is where we can really make the biggest difference on the racial wealth gap. And I'm excited about that work and about the opportunity to expand that work on the city's behalf, and really grateful to both Councilor Braden and Counselor Lou Jean for joining me today. I know that the latter won't be speaking, but I actually first met her advocating for exactly this, for first-generation homebuyer programs and funding for them to be expanded in the City of Boston. So I know it's something very dear to her heart. And I know that many counselors have expressed support for up to $100 million of federal relief funds to be dedicated to affordable homeownership in the city, which I think would really be an opportunity to expand the city's first-generation homeowner assistance, along with the One Plus Mortgage Program and other things that we do. We've just started to really figure out how to support cooperative housing more robustly at home. I think about our homebuyer tools, and I would love to see us be creating some new affordable homeownership units. So I'm looking forward to discussing and working on moving forward on these, and grateful to the council for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Bach. Would any other city council like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank the maker, Councilor Bach, for your initiative in this very important issue, and including me as a co-sponsor. Expanding pathways to homeownership and making those pathways accessible and equitable is probably the most important work that we do to try and secure the future of our city and for its residents. Because of racial disparities and intergenerational wealth transfers, expanding homeownership assistance and supports for first-generation homebuyers especially is one of the most effective ways to directly target the racial wealth gap in Boston. And we cannot continue to be a city where the net worth of white households is $247,500 and only $8 for black households. And again, it's the homeownership aspect of this situation that is so critically important. In District 9, families in Austin-Brighton are leaving because they are being priced out of the neighborhood when the barriers to home ownership are so high, and our community suffers. My office has been able to achieve commitments from proposed developments to shift from high AMI rents to homeownership units at affordable levels that are attainable for our rent. But sadly, the numbers of these actual units are pretty limited. However, we have also heard from first-generation homeowners who have attained their homes through city programs and are experiencing difficulty with unexpected excess of home maintenance costs and managing maintenance funds through homeowner associations. And as we work to increase funding and support for first-generational homeowners to attain their homes in the first place, we must also consider technical assistance and education available from the city and our community partners who offer first-time homebuyer courses. It's one thing buying your home, it's another thing maintaining it and ensuring your stability in the longer term as well. We must open conversations and review programs for homebuyer assistance to move towards a city where more of us can actually call home. So thank you very much, Council Bach, for this initiative, and I look forward to continuing with this work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Braden. Would any other city council like to speak on this matter? I see Council Bach.
Sorry, Mr. President, if I could just make a very brief addition, I would feel remiss not to mention. I mentioned the great work of the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Alliance. I also just wanted to highlight in terms of recent progress on all this that actually affordable homeownership was a big part of the reason that the Greater Boston Interfaith Organization got involved in organizing for Community Preservation Act legislation for the referendum in 2016. And after it passed, they and a number of other allies advocated for us to launch the One Plus Boston program. So just want to note for counselors here that the city's expanded support for affordable homeownership has really accelerated over the last few years, and I would be remiss not to mention all the organizing work that GBIO, along with MAHA, has put into that. So thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for your indulgence.
Thank you, Council Bach. Would any other council like to speak on this matter? Would any, the chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Just want to add my name.
Please add Council Flaherty's name. Please add Council Arroyo's name, Council Baker's name. Please add Council Worrell, Council Lara, Council Murphy, Council Mejia. Docket 0204 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. I don't think I missed, I think everyone was included. Madam Clerk, we're moving on to personnel orders.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, I think you're on mute. Yeah, Council Braden.
May I make a motion?
Yes, yes, Council Braden.
I'd like to make a motion regarding the Rule 36 in the council rules.
Madam Clerk, Council Braden has made a motion to reconsider docket 0205.
Mr. President and Counselor Braden, please correct me if I'm wrong. What has been filed is City of Boston in the year 2022, motion of Council Liz Braden amending the adopted City Council rules for municipal years 2022 to 2023. And the motion reads, and I don't know if everyone has a copy, hopefully.
Madam Clerk, everyone should have a hard copy and an electronic copy via email.
Great. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read this matter into the agenda, if that's all right with you, Mr. President.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Motion of Council Braden, be it moved that the Boston City Council rules for municipal year 2022, 2023 be amended as followed by inserting the following after the second sentence in the first paragraph of Rule 36. And it reads, communication shall be filed with the city clerk detailing the named chairs, vice-chairs, and members who are assigned and authorized to vote on matters in each committee. This was late filed in the City Council on January 26, 2022. So the first action that needs to be taken is to a vote as to whether this matter is now properly before the body.
Madam Clerk, does it need to be second or just voted?
Second.
It needs to be second? Is there a second on this?
I'll second.
It's a motion, Madam Clerk, it's a motion, not a refile. It's a motion.
Right, but it's on a matter that we took. But at any rate, we have a second, so.
Council Baker has seconded. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Council Braden, would you like to speak about this?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's really just a matter of having some clarity about and transparency with regard to our committees right now. We have suspended and passed different dockets this afternoon and allocated them to committees. We have, we've suspended and passed, and we have made allocations to committees, and the body is not really clear on who those committees are. Who are the chairs? Who are the vice-chairs? And who the members of those committees are? So I think it's just a matter of clarity for the body to be clear on who those committees, who's on those committees. And I think it would be very helpful for us all to understand who we would be working with and who we should be partnering with on these issues.
Madam Clerk, could you clarify on what the next step would be for the body to take?
Well, I just, if you would bear with me for just one moment. Historically, the committee assignments have never been assigned to the rules because the committee assignments are strictly under the purview of the president. Now, your motion is adding that language. So we already have it seconded. It's properly before the body. So I might suggest the next, if someone wants to, other people want to comment, but then we would need to take a roll call vote because we are in virtual meeting, and all votes are required to have a roll call vote. Once we go back, you know, at usual meetings, now that we're back in session, they're just roll call votes. But in this instance, we would be required to take a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would any other city council like to speak on this? Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this. So Madam Clerk, are we at the point now that we would take a vote on this?
Madam, Mr. President, this is Counselor Edwards.
Before we vote, I'd like to recognize Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear about the, one second. I'll choose it. I think I have my. Sorry, are you hearing me correctly? Are you hearing me okay?
Yes, we can do that.
Sorry, that it's just on my end. Sorry, that it's just on my end. So just to be, just to make sure I'm clear, earlier in today's session, you had mentioned that while there could be a vote today, and yes, I understand that there'd be some sort of, I think the word was transparency, about what and who the city committees or council committees would be. This isn't precluded, a future amendment. This isn't preclude a hearing on the committee structure or. on the committee structure or potential changes. Mr. President, am I correct?
I believe so. I would like to ask Council Feeny, I believe the answer is yes, just want to confirm with Council Feeny, Clerk Feeny, if that is correct.
And so, and I'm sorry, I was having trouble hearing you.
My apologies, Madam Clerk. My apologies, Madam Clerk. I just, I recall earlier in the session, Councilor, President Flynn had mentioned that the, the rules, while they could be voted on today, doesn't prevent further discussion about them, further amendments, that they could go to the Rules Committee, and even with this amendment adding in the certain amount of transparency of who's getting what and when, it doesn't preclude that future conversation. I just want to make sure that that was still your understanding, and President Flynn's as well.
That is. As you know, we cannot have the same matters referred more than once. So, when something gets filed and action is taken on it, it can't be filed in the same year. But what is being proposed is just an amendment to the approved minutes. And I believe President Flynn had made it clear that, you know, at any point in time, people can bring to the floor amendments for the rules, which would then go to the Rules Committee.
Very well, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry to hear the question the first time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam, Madam Clerk, and yes, I, I will make sure that when things come into the Rules Committee, that there would be a hearing as soon as possible.
Mr. President, could we call for a vote?
I just want to make, make note.
Hold up, hold on for one second, please.
There's a motion on the floor.
Madam Clerk, I know Council Mahia wanted to speak, but there is a motion on the floor. I know, what is your advice on this, Madam Clerk?
When there is a motion on the floor, and Council Brayden did make that motion, you can't interrupt a motion with regard to a vote. Now, if Council Brayden would like to withdraw the motion and allow Councilor Mahia, but there is a motion for a vote, so I'm sorry.
I'm just curious.
I'm happy to withdraw, I'm happy to hold the, the motion for a vote until I hear from my colleagues who wish to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank, thank you, Council Brayden. The Chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you Clerk Feeny for always facilitating all of this with so much grace. I always am just curious about these little surprises that pop up onto our council floor. And I just want to be really clear about what is the discussion that we're having right now. It seems like there is some question, and I need to get a better sense that we are moving forward with a motion that is going to give us as councilors an opportunity to rebuttal whether or not people got assigned what committees, because I just want to be clear, what are we voting on?
Mr. President, I'd like to just clarify my, my rationale for this motion.
The?
I just wanted some clarity. The reason, there's no surprises, there's no, there's no tricks or any moves here, Council Mahia. The, the sole purpose of my request is that we would put out, that we would be furnished with a list of our committee assignments, who's the chair, who's the vice chair, and who the members of the committees are. We are ready this afternoon, voting, allocating, assigning dockets to committees. We are suspending and passing, and we don't have any idea, we don't have, none of us have a full idea of who, who are on these committees, and it's just a matter of clarity and openness and transparency with regard to who our committee assignments are and how we should be moving forward.
Council Flynn, could I respond to that?
Yes, the Chair recognizes Council Mahia.
Yeah, so, I'm just curious, because I went through this in 2020, and this was not a conversation that we had. So, I'm just curious, what is different between the, the rules that we voted on the last time, now fast forward to 2022, what is the discrepancy here, so that I can have a better sense of the discussion that we're having?
Yeah, Council Mahia, I think that's a good question, and the reason, you're right, during 2020, we didn't have conversations back and forth about committee chairs, about vice chair or chair. I chose as the incoming president to engage my colleagues, especially knowing that we had a large group of new colleagues. I wanted to make sure that they were comfortable with their, with their new committee assignments. So, I did try to be as engaging and try to have as many conversations as I could with councilors, especially new councilors, and tried to, and tried to be as fair as, as I could. But, but you are right, generally, there is no discussion back and forth between the, the President and the, the councilors on what committee you get. There's no negotiation. I hope, I hope that information is helpful.
Mr. President, may I, may I also add, we're not in the business of having a discussion about what the committee assignments are, we just actually like to put it in the public record, who, what are the committee assignments?
Yes, Council, Council Brayden, in response to your question, the committee chairs and the assignments will be sent out this afternoon, after this meeting.
And can we put them in, and can, can we request to put them in the public record?
Yes, yeah, that's, that's a public document. Once, once the committee is a public, it's a, it's a public document, document, the public will certainly, the public will certainly have the, the option and ability to, to read it.
The purpose of the motion was just to have it, have it be filed with the, the assignments be filed with the clerk's office to put them in the public record.
Yes, this will be a public record, it'll be a public document, it will be, it will be on our homepage, and constituents will, will be able to read it, and will be able to call us up and know exactly who the chair is, who the vice chair is, who the members are, and then it's our obligation to respond to constituents.
If, if I may just add a little piece to this, and I'm not trying to be generous, but I want to make sure that people are aware that we are taking, you know, for all you future presidents out there, we, we hope we're going to have a lot of them, you know, each year, there, each, each election, we, the council elects a president for a two-year period, and it is the, under the purview of the president to create or change committees, you know, perhaps change titles, functions, different departments moving from one committee to another. And that is all within this process that requires your vote. The actual assignments are always made public. Honestly, generally, you know, prior to adopting the minutes, they usually are known, for whatever reason, we're in this situation. And what I, I would just say is, you know, to take proprietary action from the president as to who he appoints or who she appoints is, I don't know, I just, I just want to raise that issue, this has never been included in the rules because it is under the sole discretion of the president. Now, you may still decide to do it, that's fine, I'm, I'm not taking sides here, I'm just pointing out to you that one is a function of how this council operates, the other is the position as president to determine who leads those committees. So, you know, I just wanted to be very clear so that you understand they're different, it's very different and distinct functions here.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, I know people still have their hands raised, let me, let me call on Council Mahia, I do want to make sure anyone that wants to speak on this matter is heard, Council Mahia wants to be heard, Council Flaherty as well, and I want, I'll call on whoever else wants to add their input on this, but at this time, let me ask, Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, President. Flynn, I just want to be clear, and I really do appreciate this conversation, because I know there are a lot of people who are tuning in and probably learning, right, about how, how government works, and how sometimes, you know, we, we go back and forth on certain things, and I think it's really important for us to bring our people along in these conversations. So, I do appreciate Clerk Feeny giving us a little bit of a perspective and historical kind of, like what is the norm and how things typically function, because I think we're all learning in this process, and every, every single term is going to be totally different, right? And so, we just have to morphous and adapt to whatever environment we happen to be in. With all that said, though, I am curious, and it just, it's really important for, for me to, to say this, is that, you know, a lot of folks who follow these conversations, you know, for me, I, I personally do have some concerns about the, the, the nature of the, just how we even got here, but I will say that in good faith, right, I'm going to assume that my, that President Flynn, and the discussions that he's had with all of these folks here, all of my colleagues, that he's going to honor those conversations, right, and that we're going to be assigned the committees that we have been speaking on, right? So, I guess to Council Brayden's point, there is, seems to me there might be some uncertainty, and the devils are on the details, and there's some, some questions that are leading us to believe and to doubt, you know, what that looks like, and I just want to just say that in good faith, you know, I'm supporting moving forward and, and moving forward with, with just moving on with these rules, with the understanding that the conversations that I've had and the commitments that have been made to me are going to be honored. And that is for me, one of the things that I just want to, like, name, and if there is any discrepancies, that it should be known. Thank you.
Mr. President, the Chair recognizes Council Flaherty.
Just a, I guess a offer of a suggestion, or maybe even a friendly amendment, that just given the hour, it's almost 3:30, we probably would have wrapped up session had we not been interrupted and had to shift to Zoom, that doesn't make any sense to take a brief recess, circulate, or distribute the committee assignments, and then rejoin, rejoin just to adjourn the hearing, just again, just to suggest in a friendly amendment, given the hour, under normal circumstances, we probably would have already had that document had we wrapped up council session an hour ago, but again, just to the, to the discretion of the Chair.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. I know, was there someone else that had their hand up? I, I thought I saw someone else. Madam Clerk, I see no more discussion on this matter. Council Brayden has her hand up, Council Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. I really, I, I just, one possible, like, to Council Flaherty's suggestion, you know, it would be helpful if you could just release the committee assignments, you know, during this meeting, so that we know where, who's where and what.
Thank you, Council Brayden. Council, Clerk Feeny, are we voting now on the, the, the motion that was on the floor, or what is our next step?
I, I would say if we're voting on the motion, first and foremost, it's two-thirds vote, you need nine people to agree to add this, this motion, and I would suggest that our good Council Brayden, once again, make the motion to move for a vote.
Yep, can I? We're going into, Council Brayden?
Yes, Mr. President.
Would you like to make the motion, and then maybe someone would second, second it, and then we'll go right into the vote?
Yeah.
Can I just ask what this motion is? Is this the motion to just add the communication, shall we file with the city clerk, is that?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
What I just read into the record.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Council Arroyo. Council Brayden, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate that this, this addition to the, the rules in no way takes away your authority to assign committees as you see fit, Mr. President. It's really just a matter of communication and adding, ensuring that the committee assignments are put into the public record, and that we get the assignment, that we understand the, the full extent of the assignments in a timely manner going forward. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I think we already seconded it, Mr. Baker.
This is a new motion, because the motion was withdrawn.
Okay, so this, this is a new motion. Yeah, I'll second that, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, please take a, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the late file matter offered by Councilor Brayden on the amendment of Rule 36, Councilor Arroyo?
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bach?
Yes.
Council Bach, yes. Council Brayden? Council Brayden, you're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Edwards? Council Fernandez?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Councilor Edwards, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn?
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara?
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Louie Jen?
Yes.
Council Louie Jen, yes. Council Mahia?
Yep.
Council Mahia, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Worrell?
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Mr. President, the late file offered by Council Brayden has passed unanimously, and I would just add, I think as, as Councilor Brayden indicated, this is more for a timeline than a chain, if I'm, if I'm not, I hope I'm not overstepping, but, so, I guess I would, as clerk, ask one question, does this change the vote on the committees? I mean, the rules? It shouldn't, I mean, it was offered as a motion and as amendment, but I just want to be sure.
Madam, Madam Clerk?
The Chair, the Chair recognizes Council Bach. Council Bach, you have the floor.
Mr. President, as a point of order, I would say, my understanding, at least, of what we just voted on, was that obviously the rules were properly adopted at the start of the meeting, that they're fully in, in place, and that, and Council Brayden did not propose reconsideration, she merely proposed an amendment on the rules. So, I think that the rules now just stand amended.
Thank you. I, I believe that was the intent, and, but I just, for the, you know, for the benefit of the public, I just wanted to confirm that they understood what just transpired. Thank you so much, all of you, for your patience with me.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, we're going on to personnel orders.
Right. Docket, now, unfortunately, as I indicated, we're going to have to vote on each of these personnel, we have to do a roll call because we are in virtual session, Secretary of State requires.
Yes, that's, yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0206, please.
Thank you. Docket 0206, Council Flynn for Councilor Arroyo.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules? The Chair seeks suspension of the rules? In passage of 0206, I know we'll do a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Docket 0206, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Edwards? Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, my apologies, yes.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrall?
Yes.
Counsel Worrall, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0206 has passed unanimously. Docket number 0207, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Louie Jean.
Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on this, on docket 0207?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson? Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Okay.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrall?
Yes.
Counsel Worrall, yes. Mr. President?
Please record me in the affirmative.
Oh, thank you. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0207 has passed unanimously. Docket 0208, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Louie Jean.
Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Docket 0208, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Edwards? Counsel, Counselor Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrall?
Yes.
Counsel Worrall, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0208 has passed. Docket number 0209, Counselor Flynn for Counsel Lara.
Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Docket number 0209, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Edwards, do you want to be?
Definitely.
In docket 0208?
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrall?
Yes.
Counsel Worrall, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0209 has passed unanimously. Docket number 0210, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Murphy.
Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Docket 0210, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel, Counselor Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrall?
Yes.
Counsel Worrall, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0210 has received unanimous vote. And last but not least, docket number 0211, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Murphy.
Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Docket 0211, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrall?
Yes.
Counsel Worrall, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0211 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. We're moving on to late files. I am, I am informed that there are zero late file matters. We're going on to, we're going on to green sheets. Any, anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. We will move on to the consent agenda. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the Clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent, consent agenda. So we do it all, we do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Unfortunately, I just realized we do.
Yes. Yeah, please take a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Oh, dear, I just lost everyone. Yes. For consent agenda, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrall?
Yes.
Counsel Worrall, yes. Mr. President, the consent agenda has been passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are, we are on now to announcements. I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have any announcements. I will, I'll make announcement at the very end, but any Counsel that wants to make an announcement, this is an opportunity to, to make an announcement. I, I see Counsel Arroyo has his hand up. Counsel Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a, a sort of a bittersweet thing, saying goodbye to Clerk and Counselor, former Counselor Maureen Feeney. She does not know this necessarily, but she obviously started with my father and my brother. And so there were many times when I was in high school that I would come to watch council proceedings, and she was at, at various times either the president of the council at some points, or a member of the council at some points. And she was always incredibly kind to me and to anybody who she came into contact with, which is something that has sort of been a consistent theme for our Clerk throughout her life. And so I'm very grateful for the conversations in which we've had, and the guidance, and the, and the ways that you sort of show up for us. I really deeply appreciate that. You've been sort of an exemplary public servant, and I've got to see you up close. You're, you know, my cousin, your cousin, used to teach at my school.
That's right.
Would always say, "That's my cousin." And so we would have conversations about that. And so it's sort of been a fascinating thing to have, sort of how you've dovetailed into my life over time. But you've been a fantastic, just an absolute fantastic Clerk and Counselor. And so as you take these next steps, much, much joy and happiness I wish for you, and I hope that this retirement, I know you've been busy, and you're, you're sort of somebody who's always been busy. So hopefully this retirement isn't something that you dislike. Hopefully it's something well deserved and earned. You enjoy it as much as you deserve. So thank you, Counselor and Clerk Feeney, for all that you've done for the city and for me personally. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. And I know Counsel Murphy is next. I would like to say that if Counsel hasn't given their maiden speech and they want to speak at this time, this would not be considered your, your maiden speech. The Counsel, Clerk Feeney, is that, is that accurate, that this would not be your maiden speech?
As long as, when they rise, they say, "This is not my maiden speech."
Yeah.
So I, I just want to let my colleagues know, if you would like to speak, and you, this would not be a maiden speech. So at this time, the floor is yours, Counsel, Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. And this is my second time asking for forgiveness, that this is not my maiden speech. A lot of changes since I've started. So, hmm, this is going to be hard. So Maureen, you were my District III City Counsel for nine terms, first elected in 1993 when most Councillors were still men. And I was always proud that you, that we were represented by such a strong woman who always carried herself with grace, dignity, a strong work ethic, and a tenacity to fight for what was right, not just in our neighborhood in Dorchester, but across the city of Boston. I always remembered you marching down Dot Ave in the Dorchester Day parades, next to Mayor Menino. You were always dressed impeccably with your high heels on. And I have to say, this was years before Senator Dorcina Fori made that fashionable.
That's right.
You were there, yes. You had to work a little harder to be accepted and speak a little louder to be heard, but that never slowed you down. Sorry. You were the second woman to be elected as the Council President, and you held that position for two terms and then took this role on as City Clerk. And I'm proud of you and the decades of service you've given the people of Boston. Your departure will leave a hole in the council. Your smile and willingness to help all of the Councillors so that we do our job not only correctly, but also effectively, will be missed. Your smile, no, but what is most important is your family. Your loving husband Larry has been waiting many years for you to retire.
He may not like you.
I know you will keep yourself busy with many more meaningful things, but you will never regret this extra time you have with him and your family. Your daughter Caitlin and her husband Reed, your son Matt and his wife Carrie, and of course, your beautiful grandchildren Delaney, Declan, and Lee all adore you and must be very excited that they will have more time with you. I'll end with saying that I'll miss having this little small window into your personal life by seeing you drop off your grandson Declan at daycare downstairs. My window here, I can see you walking across. And at the end of the day, many times we've seen you in the, getting in your car, putting your grandson into his car seat at the end of the day, and his face just lights up when you give him that piece of candy for the ride home.
You're not supposed to tell him, because now my daughter knows.
Sorry, Caitlin, but his face is always a big smile. It always fills my heart to see that bond you have with your grandchildren and your family. So thank you for your leadership, and you may regret that I have your cell phone number because I will continue to call and reach out.
I hope you all have it. Use it.
But I look forward to seeing you around the neighborhood, and thank you for the time that I was able to spend here. And I know I'll continue my time as your neighbor in Dorchester, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Murphy. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I obviously want to extend my best wishes to our Clerk. Served with her longer than anyone. She deserves this much needed break in the action. Today, she earned her retirement, quite frankly. But for someone that has given their, their life, frankly, to helping others, constituents in her, in her district, of course, but also across the city, and her leadership role that she played here in the City Council, for the many years of kind words, support, you know, thoughtful remembrances. My mother was a huge fan of, of Counsel Feeney. My mother was a huge fan of Counsel Feeney regularly. But also this council, we're going to miss her experience. We're going to miss her institutional knowledge. We're going to miss her pitch hitting for, like the monsoon you pitched, you pitched in for today.
That was pretty bad, actually.
Maureen has a reputation of being a utility infielder. And when we served together, you would do whatever it took to make sure that you got it done. And you were so helpful to the folks in your district. So I'm so proud to call you a friend and a former colleague. But you absolutely missed. But I know that you will be spending some much deserved time. You, Larry, obviously Caitlin, Matt and the grandkids. They're now finally going to get more of you, Mo Feeney. So that said, the Mo train is moving on to other things. Enjoy your retirement. And as always, if there's anything I can do for you or for the Feenys or your neighbors, don't hesitate to pick up the phone. Because as I have mentioned to former colleagues, your phone is going to continue to ring. You're going to be well retired and people are still going to call you to pitch it, to marry them or to run out the ground ball at a constituent service. And you have so many friends, me included, obviously, that are willing, ready and able to help you out. So I love you and I wish you the very best in retirement.
I love you, Maureen. And please give my special love to your dad, Judge.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Flaherty. And at this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. I skipped over you, I apologize. But the floor is yours, Counselor Edwards.
Well, Counselor, Counselor and dear friend Maureen, I just want to say thank you. I don't, for the newbies especially, when you come on to this body and you have a person like Maureen to be there to greet you, it's not just an orientation and the way things work. It's an orientation to public service and dedication to this particular body. And that's something that I hope that everyone will inherit, that there's a real loyalty to the body, to the city council, not just to city government, not just to your districts or out large constituent services, but to this precious institution. And Maureen, you have demonstrated your absolute, complete and total loyalty to this precious institution. And it stood by me, and I know stood by other counselors, if and when there were threats to this institution, if and when there was a back and forth to be had involving the Attorney General in council and including the mayor himself.
You did a lot of work, you were.
I know, I know. I'm a little more than average, but man, you are, since you are so great and above average, you were able to not only provide a guiding hand, a calming voice, but also the encouraging whisper voice like, you got this. You can keep going. I'm proud of you. And it matters so much that it came from you. I know, you know, with you and Diane, Monica and Peggy and Rosaria, it was all of these women. So many of us as women on the city council, we stand on your shoulders. And there are so many things that we're able to do and conversations we're able to have with complete and total ease that just weren't happening, not because you didn't think of it, but because you had a different millstone to push up a steeper hill. So I thank you for your service. I will absolutely use your cell phone. I'll be calling you up and thanking you so much for your support. As, as I know you'll always stay involved because that's what public servants do. You serve the public no matter your title. And just now, you just won't get paid for it. But in any event, thank you so much. Yeah, I know, I know. You're going to, you're never, retirement doesn't mean you work for free. I'm sorry to break it to you. But my dear friend, I will, I will deeply miss you. Thank you for your service.
You know how I feel, Counsel.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Edwards. The next person, I don't know who's up next, so I'm just going to call on.
Please don't feel you all have to say this.
I'm just going to call on my colleagues. Evelyn will have a chance to speak, but I apologize if you're out of order. I'll go to Counsel Block next. Counsel Block, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And thank you so much to the clerk. I was thinking about how when I came in as a counselor two years ago, Maureen Feeney was just like a Boston political name I had seen in print in the papers. And over the last two years, you've just been such a level head and a source of counsel and historical perspective, like everyone's been saying to, to me and to everybody else. And, and I just often think a lot about your poise in public. You're that great counselor behind the scenes, but also your poise in public. My parents were commenting on it at our swearing in. I think we saw it again today. It's been a couple of years, a couple of years we've overlapped. There's been a lot of tumult. And I was thinking, there's like the opening couplet of a famous poem that goes, "If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you. If you can trust yourself when all men doubt you, but make allowance for their doubting too." And, and I just, I've been thinking about it with you because I think the amazing thing is the confidence and the poise and also the willingness to answer questions and to get a second opinion and to not be offended by counselors having some doubt or uncertainty about what we're supposed to do. And I just think there's a, a great deal of grace in the way that you approach our questions and, and provide that institutional knowledge to us. And, and I think we know a lot about people from how they act under pressure. And, and you just, again and again, under pressure, you shine. And the other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, the other way, I think one of the other ways that you know a lot about people is from their children. And I'm sorry that Caitlin's not physically in the chamber to be embarrassed, but it was also her last day on the, on our, at our last meeting, our swearing in on the third. And I, I can't quite believe that, that you and she are together hitting us with the departures of, I think, almost combined 50 years of city hall service. But I was just reflecting on the fact that both in working with you and in working with Caitlin, who's just been an amazing intergovernmental relations person for the city. I, I always have the experience of like, you know, we don't technically work for the same like entity. I'm a counselor and, you know, you're the clerk. And with Caitlin, like she works for, you know, in my case, over two years, one of three different mayors. And yet there's never any doubt that we're all on the same side because you both have such commitment to serving the city. And it's so clear that that's, that's the lodestar. And I just think it's a huge compliment to you as a mother that you instilled that so much in your daughter. And, and just, it's, it's been a privilege to overlap with you both. So just want to say happy retirement, but this is very much our loss.
Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Block. At this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Maureen, I had the, the task of following you in District Three. You were always someone that was there for us in District Three in your role. You've been a great mentor to me. You've been a great friend to me. And, and everybody before and then after me will, will say the same thing. Your fairness, your willingness to work with us, your willingness to guide us. It, it's difficult to measure how much that means, I know, to me and to all of us here. I'm only the third person that has represented this, this district. And, and because I think we get in it and we care for our district the way you cared for 18 years and way Bunzo before you cared. I just really wish the best for you, Maureen. You know, Larry has sat around waiting for you quietly. He's out in the car. Go ahead, go ahead. It's time to get in the car, Maureen. But you know, you can really be proud of what you've done for our city. And, and I think it was Erin that was talking about how we always had a strong woman in our, in, in our District Three seat. When, when we were growing up, Erin and myself, you know, you were there and you were a constant fixture in, in not just one neighborhood, but in all the neighborhoods. And I know, and I, and I hope that you know how much the people of Dorchester love you, care for you and really wish the best for you and your family. And, and we were having a conversation the other night and your little grandson was, was in the car. I, I know that those, those are the best moments for you when you're dealing with, with, with your grandson, your grandchildren. So again, from, from my heart, from my family to your family, thank you for all the service to the city of Boston and especially the District Three and, and being a mentor, a friend and just someone that we can, that is extremely reliable. You know, and that's difficult in this day and age, coming, finding reliable people. So I, I thank you for that. And, and you've made this experience. One of the best compliments is having the person that served before you say that they think that I've, I've done a good job and you've communicated that to me and that, that just means the world. So all the best in these next couple of years for you, Maureen. I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be great. And like Erin also said, we'll see you around the neighborhood and we'll see you down.
I was going to say, you know where I live.
Yeah, maybe we'll go to the area and have a beer together. I don't know, we'll see. But thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. The next person, Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Maureen, I have to say, I, I don't know you very well. It's, it's the COVID thing, you know, we've had two years of remote everything. But I have to say, as a new immigrant coming to Boston from Northern Ireland, I did home care in neighborhoods around Boston. And one thing that I was very impressed with, the name Maureen Feeney came up more than once. And I was very impressed with the fact that you were a woman in leadership in our city in a predominantly male environment at the time. And as just, as Counselor Edwards referenced, pushing that millstone up the hill and making, and, and making an impact. I really appreciate your support and guidance as me, for a new city counselor, moving in from being a community activist to being a city counselor is a very, it's a different, different sort of way of doing things. And I really appreciated your wisdom, your guidance, your grace and your patience with, and like example today, you know, your patience with, with me and with our learning. As someone said, being a new city counselor is like a fire hydrant. You know, you're, you're, it's all coming at you. And, and you've been a tremendous source to all of us who come into this council as new, new members and, and guided us gently and carefully and wisely as we move forward. I really have to thank you for your, your incredible, what, nearly 35 years of service to our city. It's no small thing. And, and you're both as a counselor, as a president of our city council and then a city, a city clerk. So I really appreciate all the wonderful service. I look forward to maybe having a coffee, you know, maybe we get together over coffee or a beer and, and catch up and get to, get to know each other a bit better. But I really want to thank you from the depths of my heart for all your service. And I look forward to continuing our conversations going forward. But we're going to miss you and I wish you all the best, long and healthy and happy retirement.
Thank you. We have to bring Ariel on. She is a Notre Dame girl, you know.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Braden. I would, anyone else want to, anyone else have their hand raised?
Both Counselor Louie Jen and myself have our hands up. Counselor Flaherty, Flynn.
Okay, yep, I apologize. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mihia, please. Counsel Mihia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Girls, stop it, okay? Well, so first of all, I did not know that we were saying goodbye to you today. I need to catch up with all my meeting notes. But I am so happy that we are getting an opportunity to share our thanks. And, and, and to, for me, you know, I came in, in 2020 after a traumatic one vote win, didn't have enough time to even learn the council rules, let alone execute them throughout the year. And you became such an amazing mentor and, and guidance to me. You, aside from being the fashionista that I have to battle with every Wednesday on the, you know, on the runway because you have style, you have style for miles. And I was like, yes, I love it. You know, Maureen, you just like totally took me under your wing and embraced all of my rough edges and really helped me understand a lot of the stuff that was happening as it was happening. And I felt like I could trust you and ask you questions that I normally probably wouldn't want to ask other folks because, you know, sometimes people judge you for not knowing what you think, what they think that you should know. And I just felt like you was always just so completely compassionate with me. So, so thank you for that. You know, and having come into the council with very little friends, you know, I, I latched on to you as someone who I knew that I could trust. Because navigating, navigating politics was never something that I really signed up to do, but I had to learn how to do it really quick. But I knew that if I ever had a question about what was at stake and what did that really mean? And what do you think? I mean, I would refer to you and give you a call in confidence and ask you, what the hell was that all about? And so I just wanted to say thank you for always picking up my call, for just, just your mentoring and your guidance and just always keeping it honest with me and giving me so much feedback. You know, I think I've grown a lot in my two years on the council and a lot has to do with my ability to know that I can call you and ask you very specific questions about things that I was uncertain about. So I just want to say thank you for seeing me, for believing in me, for embracing me, for supporting me and my team as we navigated our first term. And I just hope that I continue to be able to connect with you. I will also be blowing up your phone so you know, regardless of whether or not you are in your official capacity, I still will always lean on you because I know that if I have a question and it's not going to be, I'm going to get the right answer. I'm not going to get like a political answer, which is what oftentimes we find ourselves debating about, you know? And I feel like your answers were always the right, what I needed to hear so that I can participate in ways that were more in line with my soul. So thank you for everything. Thank you for, for just being you. And I hope that I continue to see you out in these streets and know that you have four at-large city counselors. I am one of those four. And you better holler at me if you have a pothole because I will take care of it. So, so thank you for, for everything. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. My privilege.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Mihia. Counsel Jen, the floor is yours. Counsel.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Maureen, my, I'm last, mine will be the shortest because we've known each other for the shortest period of time. But Maureen, in the short amount of time that we've known each other, like the gusto, the energy, it's like, you know, if we didn't know any better, it's like you just started just because of the passion that is so evident in everything you do. We met in Dorchester while I was campaigning. I mean, even when, you know, in the three.
Several times.
Yeah, several times in Dorchester. And then, you know, just being here in the council, like I think someone compared it to like a fire hydrant being on and like not knowing which way is left and right. Like the, in this little time, what I've learned from you and what my team has learned from you, I am so grateful and I, you know, for, for, for not only for you and what you've meant for the city, but also for, you know, when you, you don't know what you don't know. So I'm constantly learning from every source that I can. And you've been one of them in these past three weeks. So thank you. I hope you enjoy retirement. If you ever are bored, I'm sure we can give you some volunteer work here on the council. A shout of holler and we got you. So thank you and, and thank, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you so much, Counsel. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Counselor. I know Counsel Fernando Anderson has her hand up. And Counsel Fernando Anderson, and I know this will not be a maiden speech, correct?
Oh, thank you for reminding me. No, definitely not my maiden speech.
We're all coming. Give me absolution.
My maiden speech would have been, Maureen, it's so beautiful. Maureen, you're such a pleasure. I like Ruthie, I don't know you that well, right? So I want to make this as genuine as possible. It's just been such a pleasure. You're a beautiful woman. Your energy is amazing and you were so kind to me and you're always smiling and so bright. One of the few people that honestly, everyone is so kind in city hall so far. And I know that might change. But you give me the warmest hellos and I wish you all the best. And honestly, with all due respect, you are a very bright woman and I respect you. I wish you all the best and happy retirement.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. I know Counsel Worrell also has his hand up. Counsel Worrell, the floor is yours. And I know this is a maiden speech, but I do see your hand up, Counselor.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to, Counsel Laura did have her hand raised before me.
Oh, she did. I apologize about that.
Okay, but, but she said it's okay for me to go, so.
Okay, okay.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you for all your years of service, Maureen. And every time that I ran into you, it was always a warm welcome and there's always a smile on your face. And like we've heard, it's just always filled with energy. And yesterday, when you was trending on Twitter, I'm not sure if you saw that, there was so many stories of, you know, how you impacted and had an impact and how you impacted the city, everyone's life. So it's going to be unfortunate that I don't get to have more stories of my own to tell, but I wish you the best in retirement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I wish you the best of everything.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Laura, I apologize for not seeing you when I should have called on you. Counsel Laura, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Flynn. And this is not my maiden speech. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Clerk Feeney for all of your years of service. You have been serving the city and I am aging myself for as long as I've been alive. So, and I know that, you know, hearing stories from other city counselors that you've had a great impact, not only on the work that we do on the city council, but on the city of Boston. So I'm really grateful. I've known you as a youth organizer, both as a city counselor and the clerk, you know, coming to city, to city council meetings and testifying and advocating. And I've always remembered your, all of the things that everyone here says about you. That is one of the things that's most memorable about you. And the first time that I got to meet you in person was maybe seven, eight years ago when you married my husband and I in your office. And I'm getting close now, but I won't hold it against you. I'm not going to, we're not going to use that. But I remembered how incredibly honored I was to be in your office and say, wow, Maureen Feeney, you know, is going to marry me. I'm like walking into Sweet Hall. So thank you, just very, very grateful. Congratulations on retiring and I look forward to working with you in whatever capacity comes through. So take care.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. And I think I'm the last one to speak. I also, well, I wanted to make two announcements, but I, the, the, the one announcement, I know Brian, Counsel Worrell, was working on a resolution and I know he didn't want to speak on it. But I did let him know that it would not be his maiden speech, but it was on a resolution recognizing. but it was on a resolution recognizing Willie O'Rey, who was the first African-American hockey player in the NHL. And so Brian has an outstanding resolution in recognizing Willie for his tremendous contributions to the game of hockey and to youth sports especially, in opening up sports to everybody, regardless of your skin color or your background. That's what Willie O'Rey did, is bring a sport, especially to African-American youth, not here, not only just here in Boston, but across the country. And that's what being an athlete is, is really, it's not about you. It's about providing some leadership for the next generation. So when you get a chance to read Counselor Worrell's resolution on Willie O'Rey, who's the, again, the first African-American hockey player in the NHL, it's a wonderful tribute to a wonderful man that had his number retired recently at the Boston Garden. I know many people were over there from Boston. So Brian just wanted to congratulate you on that well-written piece and resolution in support of Willie and his contributions to youth sports especially. And then my final comment, I also would like to acknowledge the tremendous friendship that I've had. My family has had really for 40, 40 years, maybe longer, with Maureen and her family. We've always had great respect for you, Maureen, not just as a city counselor or as a clerk, but really, really as a friend. And you were always there for people when they were down in their luck. If someone lost a job, Maureen and Larry were there trying to help them out. If someone needed help getting their kid in drug treatment programs, regardless of what neighborhood, Maureen was there trying to help that young person out. So she never looked for any credit. She never looked for any accolades. But that's what really the heart of Boston is all about, is people digging in and supporting their neighbor, especially when times are very difficult. And that's what I think of when I hear the name Maureen Feeny, is being there for others. So I'm proud to call you a friend, Maureen, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You're not in the chamber still, because that'd be...
Maureen, and Counsel, I mean Clerk Feeny, I apologize. I should call you Clerk Feeny. Mayor Wu also wanted to come by and express her deep respect and admiration for you and for your family. I know she will talk to you later today. And our friend Congressman Stephen Lynch also came by. And I know you had a chance to say hello to Stephen. And Stephen wanted to come by today to wish you best of luck and to thank you, Maureen. So on behalf of my colleague Stephen Lynch and Senator Nick Collins and Representative David Beal and Counselor Flaherty, who already spoke, and Baker, but also Michael Donovan, we've always had great respect for you, Maureen. So just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
At this time, does it, well, I don't think anyone has any more announcements, but we're going to go into memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. The Counselor Baker, Gailey Larry, Michael Finerty, Michael O'Sullivan. For Counselor Bock, Judy Monahan. For Counselor Braden, Sister Bobby Marie Rainey. Michael George Populous. Kathleen Woods, George Populous. Pauline Reynolds. Ava Logan. For Counselor Lejeune. Emmanuel Adonis. I apologize if I didn't pronounce it correctly. Ava Williams. Elizabeth Lee Frederick. For Counselor Worrell. Laet Eliza. Quarles. Bruce Thomas. Brandon Tyree Regland. For Counselors Lara Worrell and the entire city council in the city of Boston. State Senator Bill Owens. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, that it does so in memory of the mentioned individuals. And it is scheduled to meet, we are scheduled to meet again in the Ionella Chamber on Wednesday, February 2nd at 12:00 noon. However, it could change based on logistic challenges, and we will keep everybody posted. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 The council is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. You're all in my prayers.
Bye, Maureen.
Lots of love to all of you. I'll be watching you.
We'll do a good job for you.
Oh, you always are. Thank you.
My visit.
I promise.
Thank you, Maureen.
Bye. Thank you. Thank you, Ellen.
Your kind words.